It is 6:30 on Tuesday, April the 19th, 2016. We're at Radcliffe City Hall, 411 West Lincoln Trail Boulevard, Radcliffe, Kentucky. And the scheduled city council meeting for this date will now come to order. Michael Pike, would you lead us in an invocation and then follow with the pledge of allegiance?
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for the beautiful day we've had. We thank you for all of our blessings. Thank you for peace and freedom in our country. We ask that you give the mayor and the council wisdom as they conduct the business of the city tonight. We ask that all things be done decently and in order. Thank you for all of your blessings, in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City clerk, would you call the roll?
Barbara Baker, here. Stan Holmes.
Present.
Edward Palmer.
Here.
Terry Short.
Here.
Kim Thompson.
Here.
Chris Yates.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The first thing in your packet is the minutes of March 15th, 2016. And I'm ready for a motion to adopt whenever someone is ready.
Shall we move?
Have a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
I'm sorry, who was that? Stan, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt, the minutes approved. We also have the minutes for a called meeting on April 11th, 2016. And I need a motion to adopt those.
Shall we move?
Second.
Have a motion and a second from Councilman Palmer and Holmes. Any discussion on the minutes?
It's to be turned to, it should be returned from. Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, on the minutes, it looks like on the executive session, Mr. Palmer made the motion, seconded by Ms. Baker, to return, should be from the... From... No, 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 that's okay.
Return to?
To the call meeting from executive session, right?
Right.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, to return to is fine.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir. Never mind.
Yeah, we're good.
Ignore the lawyer. That'll be the first time.
Ignore the mayor who engaged a lawyer. Okay, the first item of business is...
Do we need a vote?
Okay, let's vote on that.
Sorry, I just wanted to do...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to adopt those minutes. Okay, the first item of the business is guest is Tim McNally from Waste Management.
Thank you, Mayor. Nelson, I want to introduce you to Andy Reynolds. Andy's passing out a piece of paper. It shows where waste management is one of the top companies in the United States when it comes to veterans. One in 14 of our employees are all veterans. I think it's very important with the city being so close, obviously, to the base. And we kind of were going around today, and I said, "When you deliver that, I'll explain to them that you kind of started in the mailroom tonight by delivering all of this." So we had a little chuckle about that this morning. We had a meeting with the mayor, city clerk, and a few others back in December. And we talked about, in the meeting, you know, I came to the mayor and kind of expressed an interest to renew the contract for another five years after the two and a half that we've got left. We started talking about one of the people that Julie had called me and said, "We have a person that needs your help. We have a roll-off container. Would you be willing to donate that?" And we said, "It's always, 'Of course.'" And it turned out to three or four, no problem. And then we reduced the other ones. I think it was eight or nine altogether. Not a big deal. So I came up with the idea that if we could renew this, I would offer the city an extra 25 roll-offs per year at no charge for things like this happening. By doing this, and if we would extend the contract, there would be no price increase through 2023. Now, addition to the 25 roll-offs that we would do each year, we also donate the recycling box, which we haul about 30 times a year at no additional charge. And maybe to put a number to it, it's about $150,000 over the standard contract. Obviously, we think this would be a great financial move for the city. And one of the things that's going to allow us to do if we would get the extension is waste management within the next 10 or 12 years will be completely compressed natural gas vehicles. In Louisville, our fleet of 100 trucks are all compressed natural gas, no fuel. They burn cleaner, they're a much better piece of equipment, and they're very quiet. We have trucks right now that are three to five years old. Once they reach eight years old, nine years old, we will circle those back around to another district that needs them. Our goal is to have this renewed, and we would put compressed natural gas vehicles within the city, within our E-Town office, so it would encompass the city of Radcliffe as well. We think that'll take place within the next three to five years. So not only does it give a cleaner effect to what we're doing, a cleaner effect to what y'all expect from us, it will also save the couple, three jobs that we have, and we can plan out into the future for these folks. So that's basically what I have to say tonight and entertain any questions that you might have.
I've got a question. What's a roll-off?
They're the big construction dumpsters that we do for the city now during April.
Okay.
You see them at sites. We typically just have 30 yards now. So those are the ones that we would provide.
What's happening in the industry is prompting you to come to us two years prior to the contract ending. Like I said, enter another contract, first question. Second question, all these advancements that you talked about, is that going to lower your costs and increase your profit margin?
Well, what we have to consider is, the answer is kind of, but what we have to do is we have to look at what will fuel be within the next seven, seven and a half years versus compressed natural gas. Now, to put in the compressed natural gas station will cost a minimum of half a million dollars. Now, we're going, that's what we're going to use, piece and part of that money too. But what that allows us to do is plan out to the future. And I just, I really kind of came up with the idea, because I've been working with you folks for so long, that I just thought it was a great opportunity for the city to do this. And it will allow the residents to know that this is the price, and it's going to be this price this far out.
All right. The last time you presented to us, you said something about, I forget the estimate, the years you said, that we would probably end up being paid to take our garbage. That's the trend of the industry.
We'd hope so.
And you projected that the price was going to shift to the point where we'd almost be getting our garbage down for free. So my concern is, I know you said what the benefit is to the city, but what I'm trying to get you to reveal to me is what's the benefit to you. Because I need to weigh the benefit to you versus the benefit to the city, and I would love to have other industry experts to come and tell me what's happening in the business. So that's kind of what I'm trying to get at, is I know what you said the benefit. I think anytime we can stabilize the price, that's great. The only problem is, is in three years, it should be nothing, and we're locked into five years of something, then we didn't get the good end of the deal. So what were you... And I understand, you're here to make money, and you have a business model, but I just want you to understand, if you're presenting us with a business proposition, I'm sure that there's benefit to you. I just need to weigh that cost benefit to you versus the city and make a wise decision.
Right. I think what, Mr. Palmer, what you're alluding to is what I presented within the last year or so, was there's going to be a trend where landfills will start being mined. And what they would do is they would take that garbage and they would turn it into pellets. And pellet like that, and then they would burn it. Unfortunately, right now, that's not a viable thing to do because fuel is so low. It really comes to the high cost of fuel. And that was a long-range goal. That was nothing that was going to happen within a... I hope I didn't present it to you that was going to happen very quickly. It certainly was not my intent. We do have what we call a wheel-abader place, that's what they're called, wheel-abaders, where they do that. And they're mostly up east, and they would power a city much this size, about this size. Nothing like Louisville. It's just you can't burn that much.
Right. I guess for me, if you're coming, you've got two and a half years left on the contract, roughly, and you're coming and saying, "Hey, let's lock me in to five more years at the same price," then there has to be something trending to a benefit. I can't imagine that you're just doing this and there's no business, no possibility that the business is trending to a point where your profit, your cost goes down and your profit goes up.
We can maintain the profit that we have today by the lower price of compressed natural gas. Right now, it's a buck ten, buck twenty, something like that. Never seen it over a dollar seventy. That is where we can rely on fuel, not diesel, but our compressed natural gas to power our trucks. We know that we can move that out. We can't move fuel out that far. A lot of people think that we can, and we really can't. We don't, we don't know that. We really don't know that. And so I hope I answered your questions adequately.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McNally, I have a question. Thank you for coming.
Oh, absolutely. This, I wasn't on the city council when the original deal was struck, having the trash collection. But there was some grumbling at that time about the disparity between the commercial customers and the residential commercials, residential customers.
Right.
A concern that I would have is extending a contract when we still don't have everybody satisfied that we had, we did the best deal then. And you're much more familiar with the numbers, and it sounds like you know what I'm referring to. I sure do. Could you address that? Oh, absolutely. What happens in a business such as ours, this is just how, not myself, but everybody bids it. When you have a base out here of, let's just say, 7,000 people, this is how I think of it. There are 7,000 people that have a lower cost. And part of the commercial, part of the business helps offset that. Because the profit margin on the residential, I'm just using, is here. Commercial is here. You can't have them both like that and sustain. You just can't. So that's, I think that's probably what you're alluding to. And it's a very good question, but that's really how the model works.
So the commercial customers subsidize the residential customers in most of the bidding of most companies?
Oh, yeah. As an example, we bid the city of Hillview last night. It's pretty much exactly like this, but smaller. They have 150 commercial accounts. Here, we have about 500. They have about 2,500 residential accounts, and you've got about 7,000. Last night, when we figured the bid, the commercial part of the customer helped pay for that, okay? And that's generally how we do it. You know, the prices around here, you know, we certainly look into that. You know, in Vine Grove, I'm probably not offline by saying it's about $15 a customer. And I think out in Harding County, it's 15.
It's $16.80 with a car, $14.80 without.
Right. So, you know, we kind of, we obviously look at that, but we're real, I'm gonna be honest with you, this is my last year in the business. We've all talked, this is kind of a bittersweet moment for me, because I've been working with you folks for at least 14 years. To me, this is about jobs.
I see.
It's, I can keep my guys working. And that is the most important thing to me beside of everything. I don't care how much money I make, I really don't. But I care taking care of my guys. And that's emotionally where I'm at with it.
Sure, that's understandable. The commercial accounts, though, did complain in the past that them subsidizing the residential part of the, part of your estimate or your billing procedure, they objected to that. And they still object to that. So I would be reluctant to agree to anything that wouldn't deal with that in some way. So, but we're not, we're not deciding...
Yeah, I can't do anything with the price now, I mean, it's under, it's under contract.
Right. But what I was referring to, if you're talking about extending the contract, then maybe we could talk about amending the contract in a way, in such a way that our commercial customers here wouldn't object like they do. I've had several call me back when this was originally being done. I didn't have any input in it at the time, but some of these folks did, and I know they objected somewhat to it. But I understand your business model.
I'm always open to anything, I really am.
What I am saying, though, is if you're asking for an extension of the contract, you're asking to somewhat renegotiate our deal. So that's the reason why I brought that up.
Oh, absolutely. No, it's a fair question. Sure is.
I mean, would that be a possibility, that you could maybe crunch some numbers and see, so that we could go, even if we don't change the figures that are under contract now, but from the rest going on the other seven years, five years?
Yeah, would it be five years?
Five years. And I understand what you're looking for. You're needing a commitment from us in order to get the other equipment and make it, you know, where it's going to be better for everybody, as far as getting the additional trucks and the better equipment to come on our streets.
Let me ask you a question, then. If I can get okay to 5% to 10% reduction in commercial business, will you agree to this?
You'd have a whole lot better chance.
One thing is, we're moving in the right direction, that's for sure.
Yeah, I can be honest with you, it won't go any higher than 10. There's just not a lot here. There is a lot, but not as much as a lot of people think. We make all our, really, our money, our best money, like in, say, in E-Town, where it's individual subscription. They're paying a lot more.
Let me just add this, though, and I don't want to prolong this, but just to add this, because this is a piece we didn't mention. Back when this contract was originally done, many of the commercial customers objected to the fact that they couldn't just go out and arrange for their own trash pickup. Some of them felt like they could do that at a lesser price. But I understand the franchise agreement, you have to have it, you know, we don't want five or six different companies' trucks running over these roads.
Yeah.
But that's just a concern we have. So if we figure out a work around it, I think maybe you'll find that most people here would be receptive to it.
Let me do this. Let me get back with, Andy and I will get back with our folks. I'll come back at the next council meeting, present to you what our plan is, and at that time, do you think we could have a vote?
Mayor?
Before we would do a vote, I believe, from what I've heard, that the city council would want to hear from your customers and our customers who have commercial accounts and find out what they think of this.
Okay.
So I see some of the commercial customers in the audience right now, and I think that we will hear from them before we do this.
Okay.
But we can hear from them and then maybe put you on the work session and give us some figures, and then that would give us, where we could vote on it.
I think it's a very, I think it's a very fair...
Because I heard recently from a commercial customer who was paying a certain price, and it doubled, and I didn't, we were at a restaurant, so I didn't really comprehend everything he was trying to tell me.
Right, yeah, it's...
And I would like for that kind of person to appear before the city council, and so we could all listen to what the problem is and...
Yeah, I'd be...
And we could try to do that at our work session.
Right. One thing I think that might be beneficial for those on the council that weren't, not here when we got the, accepted the original bid, is if the city clerk goes and finds those old bids, I'm sure we have those on file, and let everybody look at them, because we bid it out, individual only, commercial only, and together.
Right.
And that was with a couple of companies. I think there was two, I think you all and I can't remember who the other company, Rumkey.
Rumkey.
And this is what came out the best for everybody, is to put it together, because I believe, and I may be wrong, so I hate to misspeak, but I think it was actually a little higher separate, even for the commercial.
Oh, it is. No original question.
So if they do it commercial, see, the commercial's helping the citizens, but the citizens are helping the commercial too, with keeping that down lower.
Yeah, we're kind of all in it together.
It really is. But we went, was the best deal, but I think everybody looks at that.
I think the difference in then and now is we had another contractor presenting as well. So we had somebody to compare. If you're the only one in the race, how do we know you're the fastest?
Well, let me ask you this, you know, we're all talking about the price. Now, I understand that you, that you have had some people inquire with you on your commercial work, but overall, what kind of job have we done? I think that you will find that we've done a remarkably great job.
I agree.
That, you know, it's not always, it really just, you know, last thing I, I have to talk to you about price, I know that. But when I'm talking to a customer, I don't want to talk about price, I want to tell you what I got.
Sure, sure.
And I can tell you the piece of paper that you got, no other hauler has that.
Right.
So we're coming from a good place. And I really appreciate your comment, and I'd certainly entertain that thought. Matter of fact, we'll call him on the way home.
And the people that, you know, do the work, the drivers and everything, they could not be nicer. They really are good. They even help, if you're elderly, they will help take your trash can back up to the house, different people that have that problem. They really are very easy to work with and do a tremendous job.
And, you know, some of the other things that we do, and I'll just end it this way, but we notice when a house...
Yes.
Is being, that something's wrong. We know. And I know in my city, I live in a small city in the east end of Louisville, we actually noticed, and the person was about a couple blocks from me, they noticed something was wrong, and unfortunately, that person had passed away. But no, he had no family. Kind of nobody would have known.
Right.
This is not a totally unusual thing we do. So that's the kind of company we are, I think you know that, but listen, thank you so much for your time. Again, I'll be back, I'm glad that I get to come back to see you, because this isn't the last time. So thanks for your time, folks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one last note, is we will put some more information out about this, but if you're a commercial customer and are in the room tonight, are listening, you'll be invited to the 9 May work session at 4:30 to get input from the commercial customers. With that, we're ready to go into old business. And city attorney, would you do the second reading of item one?
Yes, sir. And ladies and gentlemen, handed out a revision of this summary right before the... What you got in your packets on Friday had the name wrong on the commission at Radcliffe Fort Knox, and the reason for that is just human error, and I take responsibility for that, being human, despite the least of the contrary, as a lawyer. But I had Radcliffe Fort Knox on there, and that was, we had five different versions of the ordinances, and it was just, it just got lost in the jungle. So the name is going to be Radcliffe Convention and Tourism Commission. That's what we read first time, that's what the consensus was and the agreement was, unless I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, tell me, but, okay, I think that's correct. So that's why the new document tonight, so the top is the summary that I'll read, and we're going to publish that, and underneath of it is the actual official ordinance that will go into the copification once it's formatted and cleaned up. So are there any questions on that? Okay, thank you. And then we'll do the summary and publish it, because it's less expensive to do it that way when we publish it. Okay, so mayor, this is a summary of an ordinance amending an ordinance establishing the Radcliffe Recreation Convention and Tourism Commission and levy of a transient room tax. The city of Radcliffe has amended its ordinance establishing the Radcliffe Recreation Convention and Tourism Commission and levy of a transient room tax in order to bring the tourism commission's ordinances into compliance with the Kentucky revised statutes. The ordinance changes the name of the commission to the, quote, "Radcliffe Convention and Tourism Commission," end quote. It also changes the numbering of Kentucky revised statute sections noted in the ordinance. The transient room tax rate is unchanged in the ordinance, remaining at 3% of the rent for every occupancy of a suite, room, or rooms charged by all persons, companies, corporations, or other like or similar persons, group, or organizations doing business as motorcourts, motels, hotels, inns, or like or similar accommodations businesses. The ordinance modifies administrative details regarding the transient tax return form filed with the city. The ordinance requires the commission to annually submit to the city council a request for funds for the operation of the commission. The city council by law must include the commission in the city's annual budget and must provide funds for the operation of the commission from the transient room tax collected. Money not expended by the commission from the budget approved by the city council during any fiscal year shall be used to make up a part of the commission's budget for its next fiscal year budget, per KRS 91A.390. The ordinance will become effective upon publication. And mayor, that's ready for a motion to adopt, and roll call vote.
Okay, you've heard the second reading, looking for a motion to adopt.
Shall we move?
A motion by, and second of Yates. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, this, because there was so much discussion in the past, with this ordinance, the Radcliffe Convention and Tourism Commission, they will be the ones collecting the money and keeping the money, and they will present their budget to us and the quarterly reports to us, and we will vote on those when we do our normal budget for the year. Their budget will be included in our, in our budget, is what it says in here.
The ordinance says the revenues are paid to the treasurer of the tourism commission.
Right.
Commission has to submit an annual budget every year for you folks to vote on.
Right.
And then you are, in essence, providing those funds and allowing them to collect that.
And just, they had been doing that. The ball dropped somewhere on our end, but they were doing it all along.
And it just brings it in line with the KRS.
Right. That's all I had.
Any other discussion?
Just pretty happy we finally got this together, and it's going to go forward.
I bet you I'm as happy as you are. Okay, we have a motion and a second, let's do a roll call vote.
Barbara Baker.
Yes.
Stan Holmes.
Yes.
Edward Palmer.
Yes.
Terry Short.
Yes.
Kim Thompson.
Yes.
Chris Yates.
Yes.
Motion carries, it passes. Okay, city attorney, the next item in old business is a second reading, and would you do the second reading on item number two?
Yes, mayor, this is the, this is the second reading of an ordinance of the city of Radcliffe, amending Chapter 10, Licenses and Taxation, Section 10-56D, Computation of License Fee Minimum. Whereas the Radcliffe City Council adopted its Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Licenses and Taxation, on or about December 31, 1973, and whereas the Radcliffe City Council desires to amend this section for the purpose of setting out regulations for obtaining a residential rental license, now therefore be it ordained by the Radcliffe City Council as follows. The Radcliffe Code of Ordinances, Section 10-56D, Computation of License Fee Minimum of Chapter 10, Licenses and Taxation, is amended to read as follows. 10-56, Computation of License Fee Minimum, Rentals Residential Point 005. A Radcliffe business license is required for those who own two or more residential rental units in the city limits. All other portions of the ordinance remain unchanged. Mayor, ready for a motion to adopt, and roll call vote.
Councilman Short, since this was your ordinance, would you like to do the motion to adopt?
Shall we move?
Second.
And Baker's second. Any discussions?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out, just for clarification, for those that might think that we've created a new tax here, this is actually just a clarification of the wording in a tax that we already had. So if a person owns two rental units or more, they're subject to a licensing fee. In the past, it's been that way, except that the wording in the prior ordinance was extremely confusing and led to some, I guess you would say, led to some complaint. So that's the reason why we fixed this.
Clear.
Any other discussions? Seeing no other discussion, roll call vote.
Barbara Baker.
Yes.
Stan Holmes.
Yes.
Edward Palmer.
Yes.
Terry Short.
Yes.
Kim Thompson.
Yes.
Chris Yates.
Yes.
It passes.
Okay. That takes us into new business, and I need a sponsor for a first reading of item number one.
Mayor, I'll sponsor the first reading of the ordinance annexing the territory of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, located east of Veterans Memorial Highway and south of Bullion Boulevard.
Mayor, this is a summary of an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, located east of Veterans Memorial Highway and south of Bullion Boulevard. The Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Veterans Affairs has constructed the new Radcliffe Veteran Center, a new state veterans nursing home on property adjacent to the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky. Previously, the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky assisted the Kentucky Department of Veterans Affairs Radcliffe Veteran Center Nursing Home Project by means of local inducements and furtherance of the public benefits for the residents and inhabitants of the city of Radcliffe. Commonwealth of Kentucky, which is the owner of record of the land where the Radcliffe Veteran Center is located, has now given written consent to the city of Radcliffe in order to annex the land into the city pursuant to KRS 81A .412. The city is now enacting an ordinance to annex and incorporate within the municipal boundaries and limits of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, the Radcliffe Veteran Center property. The subject property is located east of Veterans Memorial Highway and south of Bullion Boulevard and contains 185.115 acres. The location and boundaries of the property are indicated on the attached Exhibit A, which is incorporated by reference. Title to the subject property was derived by deed conveyed to the Commonwealth of Kentucky and for the use and benefit of the Kentucky Department of Veterans Affairs dated November 14, 2012, of record in deed book 1370, page 1511, in the office of the Hardin County Clerk. And that is the first reading, mayor.
I'll second.
Okay. That's the first reading. We'll now go to item number two, and I need a sponsor for the first reading of the next ordinance.
Anixation of property of Wilson. I'll sponsor that.
Okay.
Zone change.
Oh, zone change.
Zone change. That's for Osage?
Osage.
Thank you. This is the zoning ordinance rezoning the property located at 4618 South Wilson Road, Lot 12B of Blair Air Subdivision, PVA map number 182-10-00-038, residential four zone to industrial zone. The city council of the city of Radcliffe does ordain as follows: Whereas the planning commission for the city of Radcliffe is recommended to the city council based on the meeting dated April 7, 2016, that the land located at 4618 South Wilson Road, Lot 12B of Blair Air Subdivision, PVA map number 182-10-00-038, and described here and after be rezoned from residential four zone to industrial zone. Now therefore, the property located in Radcliffe, Kentucky, and more particularly bounded and described here and below as as follows: residential four. The following described property is located at 4618 South Wilson Road, Lot 12B of Blair Air Subdivision, PVA map number 182-10-00-038, Elizabeth Town, Kentucky. That is the address... Mailing address, by the way. That's not the location.
Right.
So there's no confusion.
Zip code issue.
Yeah. It's one of those where they have the address as E-Town, but it's really in Radcliffe. Said property is to be industrial, being Blair Air Subdivision 12B, Elizabeth Town, Hardin County, Kentucky, per plat of same of record and plaque cabinet one, sheet 5326, in the office of the Hardin County Court Clerk. Title to the above described property is derived by deed dated January 13, 2012, of record in deed book 1358, page 436, in the office of the Hardin County Court Clerk. The property is owned by Poly Properties LLC. Together with and subject to covenants, easements, and restrictions of record, the zoning map shall be amended in accordance with said ordinance. That's the first reading, mayor, and we'll do second reading at the next meeting.
Okay. Councilman Thompson, you proposed the ordinance that we take up next, which is a first reading of item three. Would you like to sponsor that?
Yes, I would, mayor. I'd like to sponsor the first reading repealing an ordinance adopting a stormwater system development charge and providing penalties for violation thereof in the city of Radcliffe, county of Hardin, state of Kentucky.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. This is an ordinance repealing the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, ordinance number 09-07-1065, an ordinance adopting a stormwater system development charge and providing penalties for violations thereof in the city of Radcliffe, county of Hardin, state of Kentucky in its entirety. Whereas the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, adopted the code of ordinances for the city on or about February 21, 1978, an ordinance number 09-07-1065, an ordinance adopting a stormwater system development charge and providing penalties for violations thereof in the city of Radcliffe, county of Hardin, state of Kentucky on or about July 13, 2009. And whereas the city council desires to repeal the city of Radcliffe Code of Ordinances, ordinance number 09-07-1065, an ordinance adopting a stormwater system development charge and providing penalties for violations thereof in the city of Radcliffe, county of Hardin, state of Kentucky in its entirety. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Radcliffe and the Commonwealth of Kentucky as follows: The city of Radcliffe Code of Ordinances, ordinance number 09-07-1065, an ordinance adopting a stormwater system development charge and providing penalties for violations thereof in the city of Radcliffe, county of Hardin, state of Kentucky enacted on or about July 13, 2009, is hereby repealed in its entirety, effective upon enactment and publication of this ordinance. And that is first reading, mayor. We'll do second reading next meeting.
Okay. That takes care of the three first readings. The next item, item number four, is the FEMA project rendering. Nice engineer coming forward.
I hope this technology works today. A little while back, we had several comments from the council, maybe, you know, they could have a vision of what this project's going to look like, and that kind of put the bug in my ear. And then I got a couple of phone calls from property owners that were excited once I explained to them how the project would look like when we got done, instead of that, you know, stand the trees that we were clearing off at the time. So I'll start discussions with our engineers, see how much it would cost for us to get a rendering. And they got a very new program. They was able to put this rendering together. Think it came out pretty good. Right here, it's an aerial view from sort of like you're flying a drone on a computer model. This is... We just passed Turner Lane going behind the eight houses on Turner Lane coming up on You see the stream is meandering through the bottom of the basin. If you look on the side... On the left and right-hand sides of the screen there, you'll see the berm, the toe, the soap, the kind of the different shadow of the grass there. That's the berm. Our basin access road is looped around the top for, you know, for access to the basin. We're flying down towards Wilson there. So that's that little miniature truck there. That's on Wilson. The drone's getting ready to fly over top Wilson. You'll see the... What we've been trying for years to get, a proposed connector road, basically an extension of Centennial. This rendering is showing that. Basically, at the intersection there, it's Centennial. The red light exists there in front of U.S. Calvary for traffic issues we have at Fairmont Drive. It would be nice to connect that at this location. Again, that area there, we field along that, what we call the field area, where we're going to put...
Can I ask you this? With that road on the right there, that's Fairmont?
The road on the right there is...
We've got a new road here.
That's the new road we're talking about, connector road.
Hey, this is a good time, and this special guest of mine, State Representative Jeff Greer is here. We talked about an hour ago. He's got some good news about this, but he comes with warning, but he's got some good news about this road, if that wouldn't take you off key.
I have with me the road plan that was just handed out Friday at about 5:00 p.m. We voted on it at about 10:30, and it's passed. And I'm proud to say that the city of Radcliffe fared quite well.
Jeff, would you come to the table so that what you say can be recorded?
Well, no, I don't... And I'll... If you've got an assistant here, me and the chief will try to make a few copies so we can pass them out to you guys. But the problem is, the governor can still lie on him. He vetoed. I don't think he will on this, but I have to make that well said so that you guys know. The 31W bike path at South Wilson Road Connector, it's a 50/50 split thing with the state and the city. The cost of the project is estimated at $875,000. We got that approved. And mayor, there was another project that you wanted that I got approved.
Excuse me. Is that this road he's talking about? Is the...
No, that's the road he's... This is the road Toby's talking about, connector road.
Challenger.
Yeah.
Challenger extension.
Is that the road that Mr. Greer's talking about?
Right.
This road?
Right.
Is it how much?
$875,000.
For that little bit of road?
That's this road here. The turn lanes out on... If you remember, Barbara, when we put Walmart in, just the turn lanes alone on Dixie Highway was $250,000, $260,000 in the turn lanes alone.
It's important to note that we're working on a couple of things with some budget modifications with FEMA to actually make sure that all of these basins are in one grant and not multiple grants, so that it's easier to save money and reuse that money. But if we put the... The dick... What do you call that thing that goes under the road? What is that called again?
Box culvert.
Box culvert. If we put that in ourselves, we'll knock about 200 grand or so off of that $800 price tag.
Well, we were struggling to find out that. Now that we got the good news, that box culvert is actually in what Mr. Greer has secured funding for.
Okay.
So we'll actually save that 200,000 that we were struggling to find money for to get it put in, but it's actually in this.
Also, part of the cost of this road is putting the fill there that makes the road, and that's fill that we have as a result of digging the basins.
Yeah. Yeah, the city's, you know, that's what Mr. Greer was saying, that it's like 50/50 match, our part is, and we are putting the base in.
We're doing our 50/50 match.
Right.
Yes.
Now, this project is scheduled for fiscal year 2017. As you all may or may not know, the budget is a two-year process that will pass in Frankfort in even number of years. So while it may not be paid out this July 1, it is scheduled to be paid out next year.
Wow. Good job on that.
Good job. Now you have another road.
Yeah, but that didn't have anything to do with this. The next road you're talking about is a different road.
What road is that, Mike?
This is the challenger. We wanted to take the road behind Walmart...
Is that this one?
And extend it over to 313.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. The turning lane on 313 at Coldridge Avenue?
Oh, that's not...
Here it is. This one. Take you through 434. As I said, we just got done Friday evening, and I have not briefed the mayor. I haven't met with the mayor yet.
Why don't we hold off on this one until you and I and Toby can meet, and we make sure that we've got all of the projects we asked for?
Absolutely.
This is very good news.
This is good news.
The timing worked out perfect on this one.
And I will say, it's much better looking at you guys than it was that group I've been looking at for the last four months. But... And what I would extend to you guys is, from now until the next budget, 2018, I would say, and now until the end of 2017, really be looking as to what we can do to improve our state roads in and around the city of Radcliffe, so that when me, Dean Schamor, when we go back to Frankfort, we can take your concerns with us. Both Dean and I served on the Appropriations and Revenue Transportation Subcommittee, and we can certainly increase the chances of getting passage out of there. And I also want to commend Senator Perry. You know, while our job, my job, was to get this through the House, he brought it through the Senate and, you know... But I want to see more and more for the city of Radcliffe, and I think you guys are doing an exceptional job. And if we can work together, it makes the process that much better. I'm going to slip out the back.
I'd have to tell you, Jeff, that I didn't expect you to get this, so thank you very much.
Thanks for the vote of confidence.
No, no, I didn't think... I didn't think in this budget process that this would be possible.
It was tough. It was tough.
And with all of the problems you had with the retirement funds and all that, I just didn't think you'd be able to get this done, but I commend you for doing it.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Jeff, thanks for taking my call and pulling away from that country dinner.
Absolutely.
I'll get a rest.
Thank you.
I backtracked, showed you on the screen, actually what Mr. Greer is talking about, that connector road. As you can see, the importance of that connector road is it allows our basin access road to connect from the Quigons Basin to the rest of our basin along Wilson. So you'll actually see the access road running in parallel at the white... Shows up kind of a white walk... Access road around that area. So the drone kind of flies, it'll go through this whole... Right now, we're flying towards Quigons, going over top 31W towards the U.S. Calvary building. The next video will be a higher-up picture. You'll actually see it from farther up. Bear in mind, this is digital rendering, so it's not... It's good for what the computer can do, but it's not like a still photo of the area.
What's that large building you just passed on the right?
From U.S. Calvary. These are the houses on Liberty Street. We're looking at the backside. If you're familiar with the... That Quigons area, there's an aerial sewer that we just went over top of that's going to be covered up with dirt. The cages and stuff behind the Bible Baptist Church there, they will be filled in, and the cages won't exist anymore. They are up on the upper right-hand corner where the cages would be. We're extending that concrete structure up to the top and getting rid of the cages. We will be piping all the stormwater into that sinkhole so that it won't be a safe haven for kids and mischief to take place. We're flying straight... Now we've done a 180, and we're flying back towards Wilson Road. Standard registry on your right. The 31Ws, you know, going over top of there. The text is upside down because this is computer models reading those roads backwards. This is what we call the Wilson Road Basin. Again, you can see the access road going all the way around it, streams meandering through it. That access road connects to Quigons and connects to Turner Lane. They all interconnect now that we got that road that Mr. Greer commented on there. We're flying back towards Shelter Row here. This is what they call... What we call the alternate basin. We'll have to get that one approved by FEMA, but it was submitted as an alternate location for a basin, and it's the preferred location at this point, so we will go through the correct processes to get that one approved. And then we're flying pretty much back over to Turner Lane basin. When they get over there, they'll take the drone up, and you'll be able to see the entire And tilt the camera there, and you'll be able to see all four of the basins. Now, this rendering does not show what we refer to as the song basin. It's on down on the other side of...
Cross McDonald's on 313.
But it's too far out. It'll look about the same. It won't have... It won't be connected by the access, you know, the maintenance roads.
Will there be an access road around that one? Not needed because of...
We have direct access off of 31W. And all the way in, this is a slightly different view.
Oh, we're doing it again.
It's a different angle, different view. They'll fly a different route this time, but they were so impressed that the semi was going down the road and moving that they wanted a second view of it.
Toby, can I ask... Is now a good time to ask you a question?
Sure.
While we're flying? How deep is this basin going to be? Is it...
Depends on which basin you're talking about. I mean, they all differ.
Just give us...[1742.01]
I mean, they range anywhere from eight to 13 foot deep.
From the access path?
Mm-hmm.
So, eight, eight to 13 feet deep? And around the waterway there, you've got some greenery. Is that just, uh, going to be grown like what we have now in that, um, the basin?
Yeah, these would be mitigated slightly different than the Walmart basin there. The, uh, the trees aren't drawn. You know, bear in mind, all these trees are put in individually. It's a muted model, but very labor intensive to put them in. Uh, what we're required to do is put a, a row of trees five foot from the top of bank, 25 foot from top of bank, and 45 foot from top of bank. Those trees will be on 30-foot centers. Uh, there's a set amount of trees we're required to put in by the Corps of Engineers, and that's, that's what will be put in. Now, this is just shown as a strip of trees. Uh, it's uncommon for them to, you know, and I'm, I'm still insu, uh, been assured by my envi, uh, I don't like to call them environmentalists, but they're the ones that done our environmental work, but that we'll be able to mow them. Usually, the Corps don't, don't like the area to be mowed at all, but our permit allows for mowing of it, which means we'll, we'll mow it like a park setting.
So, the grade won't be so steep that you can't mow?
If they don't back track on that. I mean, right now, the permit has been set up for that, but we haven't signed the perpetual conservation easement that this, that they have to sign. You know, in our permit, it says we're going to mow it, but, uh, you know, I, I hesitate to say anything for sure, um, until things are in writing.
Right, I understand.
Because that could change.
Yeah.
Now, the, the trees that are going to go in every 30 feet along the wet, the stream?
Yeah.
What's the maturity of the trees that you're putting in?
I mean, obviously, it's going to take...
Something like this?
No, they're going to be, you know, they're sycamores, uh, they're birches.
How big?
Uh, they, they'll be 30 foot, 30, 60 foot when they're full grown.
No, no, no. What are they going to be when you put them in?
Oh, they'll be, they're, they're that tall.
Okay. So, about a four-foot tree?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so they're, they're, they're put in three to five gallon size, because there's so many of them. I mean, this first basin's got 500 to, 300 to 500 trees on it.
Toby, the, the, um, projections, the 100-year flood, the projections are that those basins will probably be full, taking about 10 days to drain, correct? And, uh, that stream that runs along all of those basins, on average, is about 18 inches deep.
Yeah, 18 to 24 inches deep.
Now, I only say that because I think that there's safety concerns with houses being backed up to the, and that when they, when the streams are overflowing and then the basin starts to fill up, you know, there'll be signage, um, talking about staying out when water's present. Uh, and I would imagine you'd probably check a little more often.
Yeah, I'm assuming we'll put some sort of signage up when, you know, depending on the, what basin we're in, what the sewers are, whether the, that sort of stuff, but the, uh, you know, the park area will, it'd be, it'd be something new to us, you know, with the water and having it open up. Maybe they'd be down there walking their dog or frisbee, you know. Obviously, if it starts raining, uh, it's not like it's not, it's not flash flood season. I mean, it's going to fill up, it's not going to be a raging rapid of water down, but they need to start exiting the, uh, the retention area once it starts raining hard. I'm assuming they won't be walking their dog, dog when it's pouring down.
In the pouring rain, yeah.
Well, and then that's another thing we need to make sure we note, that the water in these retention grounds won't be in motion.
Once the water gets in backwater, it won't be in motion. It won't be as hazardous as, uh, the Rothenport River or Salt River scenario. I mean, uh, once water gets to be, the initial onset of water, when it's flowing in the stream, will have some velocity to it, and it could take a grown man down, but once it, after the initial stream gets full, it's all backwater from there, which means it's basically turning into a pond, and it's just rising like this.
So, one question that I had, so Council Palmer, maybe you've answered it, I think you did. That stream that we saw, the blue stream, that will be present all the time? Or, I mean, I'm sure in severe drought, maybe not, but that should always have some water there?
It's more likely it's going to be like that way now that we control these basins and control the outlets. Uh, there's so many environment, environmental rules that we have to abide by, you know, the, the basins hold water back. When you hold water back, it's natural for sediment to settle out of it and accumulate in the bottom of the basins. That's natural. Well, we're under permit requirement that we can't settle anything out of these basins, because we got to survey them and, and every year and supply it to the Corps of Engineers that we don't change the cross-section of those streams. So, the first five years are going to be a, a little bit different than that. We won't be able to hold water back as much as we would like to hold water back, and we can let it loose and have a natural flowing, you know, stream. But bear in mind, most time when you, when you open these valves, a lot of time that water ain't pretty blue like that. It's, it's got some brown color to it.
Right.
You know, because it's not clean water, it's kind of dirty water. Uh, but just to reiterate, I laid it, you know, while Mr. Greer was here, I laid these on your desk. This is what me and the mayor presented to him when he come down to take this to, to Frankfort, and, uh, obviously, it makes my job a whole lot easier, because this, this box culvert along Wilson, I was struggling for a way to find, it needed to be replaced, and I was struggling to find a way to, to get that money, and it's been secured in his funding. So, it makes our job, you know, my job, a whole lot easier to get that filled.
This is not an all-inclusive list of what we asked Representative Greer, Greer to do for us. He needs to come talk to us first, and we need to come back to you and tell you exactly what we did get.
But our responsibility has already been taken into account.
Yes, for this, for this, for this connector road?
Yes.
Just think about the connector road, no, nothing else.
This here.
I think, I think it's also important to note that the ordinance that, we had the first read on to peel the, uh, maintenance fee, that, that was an ordinance set in place to pay for this. Subsequent to that, we got FEMA grants, so we don't, they no longer need to charge the citizens to pay for what the US government's going to pay for.
But this is, uh, the people that might, might have been surfing their phones, uh, while this meeting started, this was, this is on the website and Facebook at 6:30 today. Commissioner Short would love that. It automatically went on. Tim set it up at 6:30 today. It started playing.
So, I have one more question before you leave. Are we going to put signage up there telling, explaining the pros, the, the project, and maybe one of your pictures as people drive by, so they can stop and look at? Because we're still getting questions on what's going on with the trees and...
Every day.
And everything.
I'm assuming, I'm hoping that the, you know, this pretty rendering we got, that News Enterprise might want to do a front page, you know, it's a second, no worse than second page article with this pretty picture on it, explaining this, and I hoping that would give us a press. Our bid's going to go out the first of May, so we're close enough to the project. I, I would like to hold off on that sign at that intersection till, for another six weeks, because that's when the, that's when we're going to see the project. The next, the May, the, the, the delayed May council meeting will be when you all will be asked to approve the bid on this project. I mean, very shortly thereafter, the contractor will be in hand at that, this Friday, this project will be out on the street on bid.
Right. See, I mean, can we not put a sign showing a picture and then, maybe not all the details, but because...
At least what the project is.
People are going to, I mean, they're going to read the paper, but, you know, not everybody reads the paper, no offense, or you might miss that day, or you might be coming from out of town and, you know...
Yeah, uh, I think a lot of the people already, you know, we can talk about that in-house, but that's, there's a cost associated to that, and whether we can recoup our money from FEMA. I mean, those signs ain't free, especially if you want to put a, a picture of this in color on it. And the picture of this in color doesn't, doesn't get our bid amount, doesn't put the contractor on it.
And I'm not necessarily talking about a whole big billboard, just...
You told us earlier in the early meeting that the signs were in the budget?
In the, would be in the, uh, cost, in the project cost.
Right.
The contractor will be required to put the sign up.
But that's, but that's, that's time-specific to the bid and the contract.
To the bid of the project.
Got you.
The project's still scheduled to start one June?
Yes, it'll be here May, what, 24th? Is that the council meeting? Special Call Council meeting?
I think so.
That's when you all will be asked to approve the bid, and then, immediately thereafter, the contract will be signed, and yet, we're still on the course to hopefully get started on Friday.
How long will, how long will we have to look at the bid before that meeting, when we have that to us?
Bid is open the Thursday, uh, we will open the bid the Thursday prior to that. Could be the Friday prior to that, so you'll have, to make you happy, Barbara, you'll have about 24 hours on the Thursday. Maybe I can give you 48. I don't know.
I mean, it's a big project. I think we might need to look at it.
It's going to be a 48 hour, I mean, it's, the bid is opening, well, with the bid delayed, three, what's, uh, three weeks from this Friday. What's that? What's that get us? That's when the bid's going to be open.
I don't know.
And is there a reason why you can't back it up, Toby?
Well, you have to give them three weeks.
Back the bid up, you know, yeah.
You have to give them three weeks to bid on it, right?
We will open the bid on the 13th, so there ought to be plenty of time, Barbara.
Okay.
We're giving them three weeks.
So, we should get something on the 14th?
I was struggling to get it in on the special call meeting, but you all, you know, are on the regular meeting. That's what the whole bid was set up for, but since you all pushed the meeting back one week, it bought you, it bought you another seven days.
Oh, yay. That does make me happy.
Good job.
All right.
Thanks, Toby.
Thank you, Toby.
Stay here. Don't go away yet.
The next item is, uh, item number five of new business, which is surplus items. That's also the city engineer. Not as exciting.
They got a handout on that one item that was pulled and the other item that was replaced with it.
Yeah, I think we pulled the, pulled the printer and replaced it with the, uh, Canon plotter. Uh, that was struck by lightning and, uh, could not be fixed. Uh, I think the last budget, chance, I don't, I don't know exactly, but it's been sitting in the basement ever since, uh, non-operational.
What do you need, uh, in order to get this done?
We need a vote to, uh, declare all those items.
You need a motion?
Yes, we do.
I make a motion to declare this list that the city engineer's submitted as excess.
Second. And we don't, we can, we can surplus it on Gov. deals.
But you still, you still need a vote to declare it excess?
Yeah.
And you have a motion in a second?
Just, you don't have any weed, any weed eaters, anything laying around you're going to add to this?
I have a pen brought to me.
Just ask for it.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, um, do we have the date, the years of these mowers? I asked for that before, and it still has unknown. I mean, to me, if you're going to advertise it, how are you going to advertise it? We're selling a mower, but we don't know the year.
These mowers, we will advertise, and they don't worth a, you know, and they will be, they will be sold as is.
But we're incapable of looking up a year for them?
Uh, we can, we can try, Barbara. I mean, that's all I, I think that's why I said that.
Well, I mean, I asked that last time. I was hoping that when we came back, we would have the information.
To sell, to sell these things, to sell these things which are, uh, none of them are operational, does the, uh, whether it's a 72 or a 76, does it make any difference?
None of them work.
It won't, it won't.
None of them work. They're all non-operational.
Why are we keep...
They're pretty much going to be used as parts, right?
Hmm?
They're going to sell as...
Somebody would have to buy them apart.
But you still would need to know what year it is to see if it matches the one that you have.
Well, the model number, if you're going to buy them apart, you're probably going to use the model number.
And, and much of this was, was, uh, acquired through the free government process.
The LISO program.
But we didn't pay for most of this.
No.
Why are we keeping the copier that we had on there initially?
I've been told, we don't, because of security reasons, and Tim Jefferies can, uh, elaborate more on that, you so choose to ask him. But when we wipe the hard drives on those printers, uh, you can still get the information off of them. So, for security reasons, we, we don't surplus those to the public. We take them to the salvage yard and have them crushed.
It would still need to be surplus, though, wouldn't it?
Yes. Well, that's, that's a question of Tim.
You're talking about the copier that was on there? That copier was actually donated instead by the industrial authorities.
By who, Jan?
The industrial authorities.
So, it was never really, it's never really, we never paid for it, so we just get it to us with the industrial authorities, uh, you know, taking this photo. And it, we kept it, and we use it for the last few years, but because it's no longer, we had a service agreement, and the service agreement is canceled by our vendor, because he can no longer find parts for us. So, in this past budget, the council approved for us for a new copier, which we purchased in the current budget.
Right.
So, this became an obsolete item. Um, it still operates, but as soon as, basically, there's no service contract. So, if the day goes down, it's done, because there are no more parts from the contract.
Right. But we still would need to surplus it. I think the question is, do we need to surplus it before we...
I don't think it needs to be surplus, because we did, because it was donated either. Uh, you know, if the council wants to surplus it, because it's currently in our possession, I mean, we'll help arm them.
Well, I mean, we're getting a, a new police car, too, and I would think that...
Okay, okay, let's, let's stop here. We now have a conversation going on between the city council and the audience, and if we have any questions of anybody that need to come to this table for them to be answered.
Well, I'm...
Jan Fox, would you come to the table?
Jan Fox.
Yeah, that was something.
You got to bring your own bottle of water.
Look, I'm not sure where we were, but, uh...
We were, do you need to surplus an item that was donated?
Yeah, I don't know how often we have items that are donated to the city that then become, uh, surplus items. I mean, like a copier. It's the first copier that I've ever known we've gotten that was a donated item. Um, yes, if we had purchased that copier, it probably would have been $4,000, $5,000, probably 10, 12 years ago, and it would have gone through the normal surplus channels. But given the fact that it was basically given to us at no cost, we used it, had it under service agreement, and the service agreement was canceled by the vendor, you know, I don't know if that's a legal question to determine whether or not a donated item needs to be declared surplus, but it certainly wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt, I would suppose, if you want to.
Who, who gave you the motion?
Because it's physically in our possession.
I amended it.
But whether or not your leader had to...
Could, could I stop right now? Would you amend your motion to include that copier?
Yes, I'm in the motion to include the copier that we're talking about here and the motion to surplus these items.
And I'll say...
Motion in a second. So, everything on here is now declared out.
To clarify what Toby said, we do normally send, though, we don't normally send those to the public auction, because of the image, uh, just like we do computers.
But it's surplus now, and you can do whatever you want to with it.
Correct, thank you.
Any, any additional discussion?
I've got a question for Tim.
Okay. So, Tim has to come to the table for us to ask that question.
Can you stay? I don't?
Okay, I got to get my stuff.
Uh, Toby, I, I think, I don't think we need you here. You can, you can leave the table. Thank, thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
And we're going to, we're going to need both of these guys here for the next...
For the copier, you, uh, they were saying that, uh, because of the hard drive, couldn't you just remove the hard drive and destroy it separately from the copy machine, and then you can sell the copy machine for parts or for the rest of the stuff?
You can, but, but from past experience, once you tear them apart to take that out, they're no good anyways.
I mean...
We've got, we've got two items that we've got from military that they've removed the hard drives from, and you can't get hard drives for and put back in, you can't use them. They're just sitting there, or they'll be, they'll be on the surplus list in May.
But I mean, if they're going to be just to be used for parts, they don't really need a hard drive. They just take the parts. They're going to take it apart anyway.
Well, then you're going to find somebody to buy the parts.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just wondering, the hard drive uses it to stop anything if you remove it, and then destroy the hard drive separately.
Right. They won't give us trade-in. They have zero dollar trade-in.
Right. Oh, I'm sure of that, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to declare everything on this list a surplus. And, uh, any other discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Toby's surplus items are now considered excess. Okay, the next item is discussion topics, and I've added that to our, uh, council meeting, because with the discussions that we're now having at our work sessions, then I need to bring some of those topics back for additional discussion. And a discussion topic at the work session was, uh, Harden County Educational TV contract. So...
I'll just, uh, touch and highlight what we talked about, um, at the work session. Uh, we have the contract from ACETV for July 16 through June of '17 to continue, uh, what's being done here tonight. Um, they have proposed a, basically, a, a server storage fee for the live streaming videos that they maintain on their servers. That is a new cost. It's $25 per meeting. There's, of course, 24 meetings. That's $600. So, that's a $600 cost. That would be a new cost for us if we wanted to pursue, to pursue what their proposal is. Um, we, we also have the option, uh, should we want to, to, um, not, to basically host ourselves, uh, instead of paying the additional fee, um, we could basically, for lack of a better term, we could become in the broadcast business and do our own, um, recording of our council meetings. Um, it's not something we've done in the past, um, but we have the expertise, uh, to do it. Um, I've talked with Tim. He's got the knowledge in a camera system to be able to do something like that for us. Um, in a nutshell, um, you would have camera systems mounted in the room. We would have a control area in the back to allow cameras to move around to whoever's speaking. Um, we would then be able to upload those videos onto the city's website. We would probably maintain the most current meeting on the city website, and then after the most, when the next meeting becomes, is made available to post on the city site, we would then send all of the stored, uh, medias, basically on a YouTube channel, where you would have unlimited, uh, access to those, um, meetings. Um, basically, you're utilizing YouTube's servers, uh, rather than the associated cost, whether it's on our server for archiving, or whether it's on ACETV server... or whether it's on HCTV server for archiving. And that is just an option for us to consider. Tim has a proposal, should you want to listen to any more detail on that, we can talk about that now, or we can talk about that at a later time.
You think the archive, going to YouTube, are we gonna, any kind of way, keep a backup of that? Because if YouTube, something happens to it, when we lose everything?
Hard copy. Harden County, they, well, if we stay with the contract, of course, we get one, we get one DVD per month, that's included with the contract. Except that HCTV will no longer store the historical on their servers like you see now. They just won't, they just won't be available anymore.
And so we'll still have the archives, we'll still be able to make those archives accessible to the citizens, even if we just charge for the DVD that we're not using. And Tim, how laborious is this whole process?
As far as just Harden County recording it.
You're doing, you're putting it on the server and maintaining it on the server until the next meeting and then replacing it. Because there was some conversation around, let's pay the $600 because of the possibility of inefficiency. And I don't like voting to spend money based on inefficiency. I like holding people to the fire so that they become efficient. So how laborious is this, can you do it?
Yes, I can do it. It's basically just converting the DVD to a file and uploading the file to the server, takes probably an hour.
So, Tim, I guess you have a price to do this, I mean, you need new equipment, right?
Did for us to record it, we'd have to purchase equipment.
So that's where you were going next, right?
If you wanted to hear that.
Just the bottom line.
Yeah, do you have anything you can present to us or some figures that we can look at?
There's a hole in the, there's a high price and a low price depending on whether it's new or used. And we would recommend the used items, and Tim can explain why that would be okay.
I don't need it, that's all. You'll notice that the cost is less than what it cost us to get this done for one year. And after that, very little cost.
Yeah, makes sense. So here's my question though. I got, it seems like there's a little confusion here, so you would do, we would not be using HCTV anymore if we went with this proposal. We do our own recording, we record it, we archive it on YouTube. And we, and you would actually take care of making sure that the most recent one is on the website after the new. I don't see a downside at all, is there a downside that I'm missing?
There's no downside.
How about making a hard copy to keep on our file?
We would also, when I upload it, I can also burn a DVD to give to Julie so she has her copies.
And then, Tim, I think before you start purchasing equipment, I think you could probably get better pricing than we do back here. You're on some new equipment, there's a whole lot of.
New technology.
New technology.
Would they still be streamed on TV?
HCTV was still streaming, right?
Oh, they're gonna come here and record.
But they'll still stream it, they'll still give us a DVD. What we're doing is feeding it to our website.
Some misunderstood. No, 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 no.
We're totally cutting them out.
No, you're probably cutting them out.
That is an option, we would do it ourselves in its entirety.
So what is that contract that we're cutting out?
Mayor, could you ask the audience to, could you ask the audience to tone it down a little so we can hear better? I keep hearing discussions from back there and it's very hard to concentrate.
The cost of the contract currently, if we continue with what Horry County Education Department has proposed, would be $7,600. And that includes the required archive fee if we want to have archived videos on their server.
Right, and here's why I think we need to do a collaborative between archiving it, having it accessible to citizens via email, via printing a hard disk, and keeping place what we currently have in Harden County. Because we have a whole lot of citizens that just turn on the old fashioned boob tube and watch it on TV. If we do it this way, then they've gotta be computer savvy, savvy, and then they've gotta get it on some form of internet connection. So I'm all for not paying additional to have them archived. But I would think that Harden County TV provides a great service and that they're putting it on TV.
And that, and that, you know, the other solution, of course, besides us doing it in its entirety, is HCTV. If we don't feel as though we need the historical on their server, you know, we can just say we don't want that aspect of the contract. They continue doing what they do now, they give us a monthly DVD, we take the DVD, we upload it on our server for the current month, and then you archive on YouTube all the historical.
Exactly.
So that can be done as well. The third option was, we take them out, if that's what the council might want to consider, is we would no longer pay the $6,900 moving forward, because once we invest in our own equipment, every year it's a savings.
Right, but here's the reality that most of us can attest to, that when we talk to citizens that watch us on TV, it's usually the elderly. The tech people, first of all, are not watching, most of them, and if they are, they'll tap into that tech piece. So I don't want to get rid of the Harden County piece because it does provide the workings of this governmental body to a large percentage of the active voting population.
Nothing says that once, if we were to check it over, that we cannot make two copies of that DVD and provide one to Harden County for them to air on TV.
Sounds like you're gonna have to do that.
But it's ours gonna be at the same professional.
Here's what we need to do, we've given you the information now. I think we're getting into what you need to take this home with you and consume it. Come back on the 9th of May at the work session and come up with all the questions that you have of Tim and Chance. And that gives us plenty of time to do it in a work session and then come back and vote on whatever we suggest on the 7th, on 9th of 17th and the 24th. And that puts us in plenty of time to either renew or reject this contract.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Tim.
Good job, Tim.
Okay, that takes us to discussion topic number two, which is agricultural use in a residential zone. And Councilman Palmer has a proposal for the council to consider, and he has had discussions with our city attorney on this. And so if you are ready, we're ready to hear that now.
Well, Mr. Palmer, I have a proposal. Mike Pike and I met for a better part of an hour and a half maybe yesterday.
Suggestion?
And, right, well, we came up with, we need to look at the chicken issue. But we realize that this is far more complicated than just the chickens. If we focus on chickens, somebody will go get a llama, somebody will go get a pony, somebody will go get a goose, somebody will go get ostriches. I mean, so we need to think about this and think about, how do we restrict those classified farm animals in residential zones? And how do we basically look at what those consequences are, what the grazing restrictions are? And then make sure that if you have a pony, you have to have a certain amount of acreage, if you have a goat, you gotta have a certain amount of acreage. When you start getting into those classified agricultural animals, we need to, again, limit the amount and make sure that we write into this ordinance the proper spacing so that it's not a problem for the neighbors. The chicken issue, I think, what I'm proposing to the council on the chicken issue is that's probably gonna be specifically written into the ordinance is that we limit it to 12, and I think I've talked to most of you all about that number. They have to buy it in, they have to buy chickens, half a dozen, and so we figured around 12. They needed to be cooped, and the coop needs to be placed on the property in accordance with current zoning ordinances. I guess there's a certain amount of placing off of the property line, both on the sides and on the back. So I think we can, we can deal with the chicken issue relatively easy, but I think there's a whole bunch of other things that we've gotta address in a very general way so that people know that if they're gonna go get a pony for a grandchild, they need to have the land so that it isn't a nuisance and that animal has the proper acreage to exercise, to graze, all those kinds of things. So, so, so we have something very concrete on the chicken issue. But now we need to have some substantive discussion around this plethora of other animals that could start showing up. And how do we specify what that spacing needs to be? So that's what we got, and so if you guys agree with the chicken issue, we can put that part of it to rest. But then that doesn't address roosters, and I don't know how you keep a rooster from, whatever, yeah, crow, is that what it's called?
I believe so.
I'm from Chicago, so I.
It's crowing.
Where'd you, where'd you get you have to buy them by half a dozen?
But I have one across the street from me and I love it, but then others may not, so.
But it's really no louder than a dog barking.
Exactly, so when we start getting into that, we already have a nuisance order, ordinance in place that will catch some of those things. We already have, you know, residential zoning, but we're specifically trying to address with this ordinance is, you know, how do you keep those animals? Because more and more people are going to raise their own food. If we go by the state reg, we can't even have a garden. The mayor's gotta get a, dig up his.
Asparagus, I volunteer to help.
That's not gonna work, so that's what I got. And we can, we can either take it up here and, or we can wait to the work session. The mayor put an indefinite stay on enforcement of this piece. So I don't think that we are in a hurry to beat it to death tonight. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, so it's up to you guys what you wanna talk about tonight.
I agree with you completely, Councilman Palmer, we don't need to beat that to death tonight. I think we need to take our slow time in doing this, and I think we bring it back up at the work session and talk about it again. And in the meantime, Greg Thompson just sent me a link to Louisville's ordinance. And they allow, in the city of Louisville, five laying hens and one crowing rooster.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, though, I'm very impressed that Councilman Palmer, a guy from Chicago, knows so much about farms. I don't know where he learned this stuff.
I just, I just got one question to Mr. Palmer, where did you get that they have to buy them in a half a dozen?
Chicago, that's what they call it.
Cause that's, that's not true.
My colleagues, my colleagues, you guys, Councilwoman Barbara Baker, she looked that up for me and said.
If you go, if you go to Orchland, you can't buy just one or two.
Well, there's a lot of other people that sell chickens and you can buy them.
Well, according to, according to, I believe it's the state law, you have to buy them in groups of six so that they're not used as pets.
And Councilman Yates, I didn't set the number based on that.
Yeah, I should say it.
I just think.
I just thought that was the city boy coming out of it.
I talked to several individuals that had chickens currently, and I didn't really find anybody with more than 12.
Right.
So, right, it'd be nice to be getting the conversation.
That's fair enough.
And then, again, we gotta talk about the roosters, I don't have a problem with them, but if they become a nuisance, then we have an ordinance that deals with that. And so, but I think the people of Rockville need to be mindful that a lot of these issues need to be discussed among neighbors. And we really need to try to keep the city council and this governing body out of those simple disputes. Let's have a conversation, let's talk about your chickens, let's talk about your rooster, and let's see if we can work out something that fits with everybody else. I don't like legislating what's going on in people's yard because I don't like when people look across my yard or into my house and have a problem with what's going on. I just got a permit for building a deck, and the city told me I couldn't use 25 feet of my property. And quite honestly, that really riled me up. But being a part of this legislative body, I bit my tongue and complied. But if I have a way to change that, I tell you, I will, because that's my yard. And to tell me I can't use 25 feet of it because in 1970 something, they built a subdivision, people were building porches and not decks, they put this ordinance in. So we've got a lot of work to do, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would recommend that you not only look at it from a legal perspective, but a common sense perspective as well. If you walk out of your front or back door and you look at your neighbor's yard next to you, what do you want to see or not see? And if, I live in a, in a development where I've got a half acre or more, or an acre or two, or a quarter of an acre, those may be big differences.
Now, in the thing, we talked about free ranging chickens, they would have to be in a coop.
He said coop.
No, you did, okay, I'm sorry.
And then I wanted to write in the ordinance that there was any reason to let them roam, that that had to be, I think, under supervision. So that we don't have them getting under the [inaudible] or whatever.
And again, it's part of all that discussion.
Right.
Right.
One of the reasons we need to do some of this discussion and to go over it thoroughly is because we already have free range chickens. There are some on Vine Street right now, if you go down there, I think there are three neighborhoods down from where they're supposed to be penned up, and they're roaming on the street. So this is more of a problem than we thought we had.
They gave us this package, you know, what, I kinda troubled me more was some of the other animals that most people wouldn't think is, there's an ordinance, you know, you're not violating the ordinance by having three pit bulls in your yard. But if one side, I got a neighbor that you ran his chickens off, and my granddaughter put a fence and they pecked on her fingers and she thought it was funny. Well, you ran the chickens off, and so now she go over and put her fingers through the fence with the pit bulls, and they're gone. So you ran the chickens off and you left the pit bull.
Left the dog.
So we need to use, as Mike Pike said, we need to look at common sense and make sure that we achieve the safety for the animals and for the citizens.
Okay, the next thing on discussion topics is the community pool. And on the community pool, last year, the kids' pool was inoperable. And when we took a look at it, it wasn't very well constructed in the first place. The supply lines under all that concrete had burst, and there's no way you could fill the pool back up. And so we start this season with an inoperable pool that's actually a hazard. And so we tore that pool out last week. We filled it in, cleaned that area up, sodded it, and then what we need to do when we go into the next budget is think about and talk about what we want to replace it with. Maybe instead of a kids' pool, we do fountains or something like that. And I, we've looked into that and we can do that without destroying the grandfather clause in the big pool. And then that takes us to the big pool and getting it prepped to open, I think it's on the 27th of May. And we had leaks in that pool. And so I had our fire chief and our city engineer come over and look at it. And I believe they finished patching the leaks that we had. It's going to take several thousand dollars worth of paint to repaint the bottom of that pool. And then I've had Chief Henderson and Toby go over and look at the pool house. And we have problems with the injectors that, in fact, the injectors don't even work, that inject chlorine into the pool. We're looking at all of that and trying to get all of that fixed and operational by the 27th. And I feel pretty confident we'll have it all done and open the pool on time.
Do you have a dollar figure?
It's gonna be less than $10,000 to do all of it.
Okay.
Thank you, that's what I was gonna ask, is about the dollar figure.
It's all about the dollars.
It's all about the dollars.
In fact, the cost of the paint is about a little over $5,000, and the cost of doing some of the plumbing is about $2,500. But we're not finished looking at that and not finished getting the bids on who's going to do the plumbing. But I, it's, I'm pretty confident it'll be less than $10,000. Okay, that takes us to citizen comments. And since John Aldridge wants to speak to us, I'm going to excuse Julie and let Chance Fox come up and take her position while he speaks.
Mayor Weaver, I'd like to have about 10 minutes, because that was granted last meeting to Mrs. Ryan, as a courtesy. I'd like to have the same amount of time, please.
Okay.
I will begin by sharing the subject of an email that was sent to each of the members of the city council on March 7th of 2016, a week before the last meeting. The subject said Edgewood Grove, Flea Market, and Scrapping opened for business. Does this sound like a complaint about yard decorations? At issue is the operation of a recycling business in Flea Market out of a driveway connected to a home. The complaint is and always has been storing bicycles, appliances, scrap metal, lawn mowers, furniture, clothing, and other rubbish in a driveway, and using yard sales to cover for operating a business without a license. When the complaints first started over a year ago, there was no fence in the driveway like there is today. The fence was built to prevent the code enforcement officer from seeing the debris in the drive. Last November, following the Veterans Day parade in Vine Grove, I approached Councilman Short and asked him to stop by my house and see the operation for himself. I had previously contacted Councilman Yates, and he indicated that there were others in the city who were experiencing the same issue. I was trying to persuade Councilman Short to support the ordinance. I was trying to persuade Councilman Short to support the ordinance Councilman Yates had introduced to, to define a yard sale and restrict the number a person could have. I was told that the ordinance would not pass and that it was an enforcement issue. Mr. Short recommended that I contact code enforcement and have my neighbor cited for not having a business license. The legislative branch of city government would rather pass a buck when it comes to code enforcement. Unfortunately, having a city official witness scrapping is not that easy. I have called the enforcement office and sent emails to the office, including pictures, to notify them when the scrapping is taking place. By the time the code enforcement officer gets there, the truck is unloaded behind the fence or it's gone to the scrapyard. The pictures in the complaint file that some members of the council will not review were provided to document how many loads of scrap were being brought onto and off of the property. For this, I was accused of spying on my neighbors. After writing a letter to the editor of the News Enterprise and getting no response from any council member, I sent the email on, on March 7th to every member of the council and J.J. Duval with a picture of his neighbor's yard. I received only one response, and that was a thank you from Councilman Short. Only Mr. Yates has tried to address my complaint. I would like to say I was surprised by the reaction of some of the members of the councils to the comments made at the last meeting. That would be a lie. While it is our mayor who is often accused of bullying, our city employees are regularly bullied by council members. The city engineer, the code enforcement officer, the city attorney, businesses looking to expand or come to Radcliffe, and now my wife are victims of hateful remarks and untruths perpetuated by Barbara Baker, Edward Palmer, and T.W. Short. Mrs. Baker is fond of saying that's not how we've always done it, and she, she has resisted all changes proposed by the mayor, including the appointment of my wife as City Clerk. Mrs. Baker's statement about how citizens are treated by the councils at the last meeting was comical. The treatment you receive is dependent on whether you agree with Mrs. Baker. Changes needed because how it has always been done has created a code enforcement, code enforcement situation where some citizens get preferential treatment. Just visit Mrs. Baker's previous home, where a business is being operated in a residential neighborhood, and you will understand what I mean. You will find a trailer full of air conditioners in the drive, along with a rusty trailer and other debris. If I lived next to that property, I would be objecting to the junk there, too. Who else in Radcliffe can operate a business in a residential neighborhood at a home they do not occupy and be allowed to store junk in the driveway? Is there one person in Radcliffe who thinks Mrs. Baker had plausible deniability when a no parking sign was taken down from her street, endangering the lives of other residents in her neighborhood? She has called the mayor a liar, but she clearly lied about her involvement in having the sign removed. Can anybody say, well, this explains a lot, there's a city councilwoman involved? Mr. Palmer, in his zeal to run for mayor three years early, has made every effort to attack this administration through half-truths and innuendo. Based on comments made in the candidate form in March, it appears he is offended by the mayor's style of leadership and expects to be included in every decision the mayor makes. He finds fault with every action taken and publicly calls the mayor corrupt. He has never produced any evidence to support his accusations. Last month during the meeting, he told a nice little story of the policeman pulling someone over, then changing the law. He knew or should have known that scrapping in a residential neighborhood and operating a business without a license is illegal. But instead, he chose to ignore my complaint in order to take another swipe at the mayor. He claims to study the issues before the council and that he makes intelligent decisions. Obviously, my complaint wasn't worthy of his attention. Accusing the mayor of bullying was easier than actually doing the job he's elected to do and served his agenda. Mr. Short told me how to pursue my issue, and when I did it, he used it as another beat down to code enforcement. He has done an investigation of code enforcement, which consisted of taking his thoughts about what the issues are and putting them in writing. Why didn't he ask Mrs. Ryan if her husband was scrapping when he met with her? Why is there not an ordinance to deal with nuisance problems that is enforceable? How can you have effective code enforcement when the tools aren't provided? I personally did some research and found the city of Frankfurt, uh, city of Frankfurt has a nuisance ordinance that deals effectively with the problems I've had with scrapping, rubbish, and storage of junk in exterior spaces. The ordinance defines the duties of the code enforcement officer, gives him the authority he needs to conduct the inspections, has serious fines for offenders who do not comply with the findings, sets up an appeals board, and clearly defines what can't be stored on the exterior of the property. If Mr. Short had conducted a real investigation, he would have known that our ordinance needs to be revised. The difference between Frankfurt and Radcliffe is that they decide to deal with the problem seriously. Last month's meeting demonstrates beyond a shadow of a doubt what is wrong with code enforcement in Radcliffe. The fault in Radcliffe lies with the council refusing to address the problem, and they attack those who try. These three council members have conspired, along with John Flanagan, the candidate for Radcliffe City Council and a member of the planning commission, to disrupt the effective administration of the city's business. They've attacked business owners who are trying to bring much-needed jobs to the city. They don't like the mayor's philosophy of lead, follow, or get out of the way. The objective being part of a team, because their concept of a team is based on a model where only one person leads and everyone else is forced to go along. Effective teams work together for a common goal. Isn't this what our city leaders should be trying to do? Successful teams commonly have more than one leader. But our council has too many people who sit on the end of the bench and complain about everything the team is trying to accomplish. They think they're smarter than everyone else and refuse to accept change. Often, teams that fail to reach their goals have this problem. People refer to it as a cancer. This council angered the owners of Boundary Oak, Ruckle Girl, and Rural King because of their confrontational approach. John Flanagan thinks the owner of Rural King doesn't know how many parking spaces he needs for his business. The owner was asking for a variance in legal manner, and these exceptions are routinely granted. There's been a lot of talk about a lack of communication in candidate forums and meetings. Communication is a two-way street. Those who are faulting the mayor for not communicating and are demanding information think the mayor should spoon-feed it to them. I thought we elected a city council to do a job, and one of their responsibilities should be gathering the information they need to make intelligent choices. The mayor's office is open 40 hours a week, and he has a phone and email. We have discovered that some of our council can't read emails, so this might not be the way to go. In closing, I have avoided coming to city council meetings and have tried to avoid commenting on issues facing the city. I have chosen to watch the meetings on the internet. However, at no time did I give up my First Amendment rights by virtue of my wife being a city employee. I also expect my concerns to be seen the same consideration as those of any other citizen. Instead, my concerns were turned into a political stunt for the citizens to witness, along with businesses considering locating in our community. From the beginning of the, the beginning of the mayor's term has been a lack of cooperation between the executive and legislative branches of our city government. The finger is always pointed at the mayor. I and many of my fellow citizens think the blame lies with the obstructionist on the council. And I would urge everyone to use their vote in the upcoming primary to choose candidates who will put the needs of citizens ahead of petty politics. Here's a copy of the email that was sent. Here's a couple of nice pictures of my neighbor's junk that they haul in and out of their property. And here's a couple of really nice pictures of Mrs. Baker's property, that's obviously exempt from code enforcement. Thank you for your time. I won't be taking any questions.
I think we have, uh, one citizen who wants to, uh, who signed up, and that is Joe Cruz. And your topic is chicken wings and Kentucky Fried Chicken?
The reason I put that is, uh, because...
I'm gonna time you. You have five minutes.
I'm sorry, what? No, the reason I say that is because somewhere before, I haven't been keeping track of anything.
Uh-huh.
But there was a man that had chickens, and he had, he has a nice, uh, place to put the chickens. I myself, I like chickens. Chicken legs and chicken wings, you know, and thighs. I like that. But as far as keeping them in the backyard, no way. This is a city. This is not a farm, okay? If we allow chickens, we already allow dogs and cats. And you know they run all over the place, even though we have an ordinance. So I can imagine a bunch of chickens crossing the road. They're gonna get run over, you know?
Why'd the chicken cross the road, Joe? No, I'm just kidding.
A lot of people say, well, I like to have chickens for my pets. They're my pets. Well, at the same time, you can bring a pot-bellied hog and say that is your pet, because you like ham and eggs in the morning instead of bacon and eggs, you know? Pretty soon, that pig goes wild and everything, and this guy with a bunch of chickens, he says, well, I need a rooster. I gotta keep my chickens happy, so I gotta have a rooster. And before you know it, that rooster starts crowing, which it did on Am's Road a long time ago. And he had a bunch of chickens. He had them all caged up and everything. I don't know what happened to them, but they disappeared. I don't know. Now, I, I understand that you people will say, well, uh, there's a guy out here that got a bunch of horses. Well, he's got them well fenced in, and he's had them there a long time ago, and he's got a nice place for them cows and horses. But when it comes to chickens, now, I'm afraid that this is a city and it's not the county. I understand the man likes his chickens, okay? That's his problem. But if he, but if he wants them chickens, he should have bought an acre out someplace in the county, fenced it in, put a nice little house in, and go feed them once in a while. It costs more to fit those chickens than if you go up out here and buy a dozen of eggs for his bacon and eggs. So, I don't know what ever became of this ordinance, or if there was an ordinance, or if there is gonna be an ordinance. But I just wanna let you know that I'm against chickens. If my neighbor ever have a chicken, I'm gonna tell him, oh, no. I don't want your chicken out here. They smell, especially after some people use their feces for soil, you know? It burns the ground very fast. And this is just a continuation of Mr. Palmer over here, that he likes the chickens. I don't like the chickens. Any aftermath?
Safe to assume you're against the chicken ordinance.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
That takes us to city council and mayor comments. Please.
But I'd like to address it to Chief Cross, if he still can.
Okay. Chief Cross?
Yes, sir. I've, I've got something I'd like to kind of present to you.
Would you come to the table?
Is this mayor council comments?
Um, it, I'm talking about the Woodland Elementary School area for starters, but I'm sure the other school areas probably have the same issue. And I live there, so I can, I can see this for myself, and I have. And I also have other people coming to me. But during the school hours in the morning and in the afternoon, the traffic there, I mean, these cars are, they're like 313 speed coming through the neighborhood, headed toward a street that goes out to 313. And although, when the bus put the stop sign out so that the kids can cross, a lot of the cars, not all of the time, not as, I don't want you to think it's all the time, but it was as, uh, recent as today, this morning. They go around the bus anyway, you know, and it won't stop. So I was wondering if maybe just to observe at first, put a plain car out, plain car out there, have a look at what's going on, and then figure out, you know, what we can do about it. And I've had a lot of requests for speed bumps at the school, but, you know, I don't know if that's possible at the moment right now. I'm not quite sure. I haven't, you know, investigated it or...
Worth to talk to...
But if you could send a car out there, I mean, you see these people, they're going so fast, and then there's an area in there where the, the street goes down like this, and you can't see over the hill. And so when they come down there, the cars actually bottom out. And then there's one in particular, a motorcycle, and I've, I've never been able to, like, catch up to them, but by the time you get in your car or something, they're gone. But he fly through there, too, on his bike. But I mean, it's getting really bad, and I would hate to see that we sort of address the problem after the kid get hit.
Right.
And only one young lady did the same thing, went around the bus, but her daycare happened to be in the same block, and some people had to talk with her about it, and also the daycare center. Not only did she go around the bus when the stop sign was out, she had her two, uh, two little kids in the front seat.
Right.
So, you know, it's getting kind of bad, I think.
Yeah, well, we have several school zones that we monitor and, and enforce traffic in, in the mornings and in the afternoons. Uh, two of the, three of the big ones are the, the 31W at Radcliffe Elementary, John Harden High School on W.A. Jenkins End over at, at North. But we try to hit the, the elementary schools, too. So I'll, I'll let the guys know on morning shift when they break, uh, after roll call, when they go to their school zones to pay some more attention to Woodland especially. We'll take care of it.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other city council comments?
I do.
Okay.
With the great weather that we've got here now going on, now that maybe winter is over and, and spring is finally coming, I would just like to encourage everybody to go out and enjoy our park system. We've got soccer going on at Dolly. We've got baseball going on at Duval Park. And, you know, don't forget to go down Saunders Springs and, and take a walk and, uh, take a bike ride, you know? Get out and enjoy our parks. Let's get some exercise and enjoy the beauty of nature.
Although I love living in this country, it's a great country. We have a right to our opinions, we have a right to, uh, freedom of speech. I just wanna challenge you to go back and look at the tapes. My comments were to the mayor's comments. We didn't have an ordinance to cite this lady on. My comments spoke to that fact. We do not harass citizens without an enforceable ordinance. I have no intention to change the way I govern. If he would go back and get out of the good old boy network and look at the tapes, when I talked about government corruption with contracts with Skylar Construction that happened to be a contract company on paper by an elected official, I brought proof.
That you voted for several times.
I brought, right, without knowing. And I do admit to the citizens my ignorance, but now every contract that comes before me will be investigated.
Right.
Because you cannot trust. Okay, so I will not change the way I govern. Every stance I've taken against this mayor, and me and the mayor has a pretty good conversation, and we do talk. But when it comes to governing, I will not make decisions that are not incorrect. So this young man has a right to his opinions, and I don't fault him for that. But he needs to go back and look at the tape. At the end of the day, the mayor says, we don't have an enforceable ordinance, so why were we bugging this lady? Now, if something was wrong with her yard, let's develop an ordinance that addresses the issue. Don't sit there and point the finger at me and say that I got it against this mayor. We had a contractor on the roof without the proper liabilities. Had that man fallen and hurt himself, the city could have been in danger of being in trouble. I brought that to the council. And again, because that upsets the good old boy network, then we get people like that that wanna come and speak. So I'm okay with the political process. But Councilman Edward L. Palmer... So I'm okay with the political process, but Councilman Edward L. Palmer Senior has no intentions of changing the way he governs. I will make informed decisions and I will stand for what's best for the citizens of
Okay, since you mentioned me again, I would just like to tell everybody that we never had a contractor on the roof that wasn't insured, was not part of the Good Old Boy Network. I don't subscribe to a Good Old Boy Network. And, and really, I'm tired of hearing about the Good Old Boy Network and how I'm connected to it. I'm not connected to a Good Old Boy Network at all. I did try to do the best job that I could of getting a good price on the front of the roof of Calvin Community Center and brought it in way under budget, and then gave up on trying to do it that way and went with a contractor and paid twice the price for the backside. That's not Good Old Boy. That's economics. It's the way I would do business if I was still building houses myself. But I will never do that sort of thing again because I don't like being accused of the Good Old Boy Network. Ed, I'm not a part of a Good Old Boy Network.
I can back up, I, once again, I will back up my statement with documentation. We have documentation that shows the contractor working on that roof on the day he was working on that roof did not have liabilities. I'm not here to argue back and forth, but what you will not do is scandalize this councilman's character. So if you want to talk proof, let's talk proof.
Okay, Councilman, let's talk proof. You say you make informed decisions, but you voted for over $200,000 to go to Skylar Construction. That's not informed decisions.
I told you just to explain that. I assumed that our city government was dealing with people on the...
You never assumed.
Once I found out, once I found out that we had an elected official with nothing but a contract, a contracting company on paper, I addressed the issue. So I do admit to the citizens that I operated out of ignorance. I don't second guess everything these people bring before us. After I found that out, I started second guessing everything. So to your, your statement, I admit that I operated in trust. But then when I proved that we can't trust them, then we have people that come here and accuse me of being an obstructionist. If you're okay with other elected officials getting contracts without a fair bidding process, you're okay with the mayor hiring somebody for a job that's not listed because they know somebody that knows somebody, then you go ahead on, don't vote for this council. But I know how business is supposed to be done as a municipality, and we need to post jobs, we need to have a competitive bidding process, and we need to hire the best person for the job. But if the only person on the track is the person that came and asked for the job, then we don't know that we got the best person. And we can go back and forth with this, but if you want to have a sure proof, we can do that too.
And with what Councilman Palmer just said, Mayor, you actually said yourself, when you relieved that person from working at Calvin and moved them up here, that that position was not necessary, and that's why you moved them.
What position was on that say? What are you talking about?
The Director of Community Center, Parks and Recreation.
You talking about the manager? How did we, how did we, how did we segue into this? What are we talking about now?
That's what, that's what he was talking about. You hired somebody when there was no job posted.
What job are you talking about now?
Did you not just rehire somebody for Calvin to be the manager?
Did you not know I was doing that?
Not until we got an email saying that you had hired somebody. After, when you came before us at this meeting, you said we didn't need that, and that's why you moved that person over to City Hall.
In your email, you said the individual approached you about a job that wasn't even listed. That's Good Old Boy Network. I know somebody that knows somebody. Go talk to the mayor, he'll give you the job. What we should do is post the job and let other citizens who paid money to send their children to, to college to get a recreation degree, apply for that job.
I think what we have here is some very angry people who are on the city council who want to, who want to vent their anger and seem to be doing it very well, and what they need to do is calm down and take a look at themselves and see if anything was said here today that might hit home with them.
I've got something I'd like to say, Mayor.
Go ahead.
This is a different subject. It's time to move on.
Okay.
A recent Facebook post concerning food truck vendors setting up the City Hall on Friday night starting May thirteenth has prompted several calls to them. While I think the people involved in setting it up had good intentions, I don't think they thought about the potential impact to small businesses. After hearing from, from some local restaurant owners and Small Business Alliance members, I feel that the city should not allow food vendors to come in and set up on city property and compete against our brick and mortar locations. These businesses pay thousands of dollars to the city in occupational taxes, property taxes, and have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested. Small businesses are the backbone of this community, and as a city, we need to support our local economy and not have someone come in and make a quick dollar and take most of it outside of our area. Most of the money spent at local restaurants goes back into our local economy. So this is just in response to this food truck vendor setting up...
I'd like to talk, I'd like to say something on that, Mayor.
Okay.
Let's, let's make something clear, okay? I spoke to several business owners yesterday in reference to this issue because I knew that it was an issue for some, some local business here in town. And my whole goal was to see what kind of situation we could work out to, to make the situation work for our brick and mortar companies that we have, as well as those individuals having an event here is what we was trying to do. This was not about, and let's, let's move all the camouflage because that's not what, that's not what we're doing here. Let's move all the camouflage because I don't want you to get the wrong story. All we were interested in doing was creating an opportunity for a venue that has music, fun, and family. Because we are looking for something that has created an atmosphere, an atmosphere to turn Radcliffe into a destination. The problem is that, yes, I use the food truck name as that particular situation, which thereby created a problem for some local business members, and I truly understand where they were coming from. And I'm not interested in doing anything to harm this city or to harm any businesses in the city. So don't get that misunderstood. Because my whole goal, from the day that I started this job for you, was to make sure that progress was being done, and that's what I'm interested in doing. So what I was trying to do was create an atmosphere that was totally different from what we had in the past. Now, the problem is that, yes, we were looking at doing it on City Hall's parking lot, and I totally, and, and again, when I was talking to the business owners, I understood their concept. So we were, we are in the process of talking to some other locations so we can still possibly see about making the, the food, family, and fun festival work is what we're interested in doing. Because if there's a problem with it being called Food Truck Friday Night, that's not a problem. Because the whole concept is to make sure that we have something for families to do and enjoy themselves on a Friday night because summer is coming. And this city closes after five o'clock. So I'm looking for something different than we have been doing in the past. That's what this was about. It was never about destroying anything or any businesses.
I never said...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So I want to make that clear, that that was not my goal. And I am looking to work with any business in this city to bring things and make it progress for the future of this city. That's what I'm interested in doing, and I work with you, Councilman Yates, or anybody
Councilman Holmes, are you now looking for another location?
I am, sir.
Because with all of the, it, it can't be a city-sponsored event. It can't be city-sponsored.
And let me make that clear as well. It was never a city-sponsored event.
I think what...
Wait, wait, hold on.
Well, no. I think what concerned me is when you listen to Facebook.
Let him talk.
Hold on. Wait, 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 just a minute. Stop, stop. A little cooling off period here. Now, let's hear from you, and I'll hear from you next. Go ahead.
Well, it was never a city-sponsored event. That information that got out was bad information, and we have since corrected that information and looking to make sure that that situation is corrected. It was never a city event. It was a private event that we were looking to do in the city of Radcliffe to bring people to our city. And if you would actually look at the Facebook page that we're talking about here, we have people from Louisville, from Barstown, from Lexington, and all other places that are interested in coming to our particular area for the family food and fun.
What are those people gonna be doing? Just out of curiosity.
Well, that's, that's, that's a real simple question for you. There'll be a venue of music, a little small jazz setting going on, and that's what we're interested in doing. So we want to have also some, we're gonna set up some family games. I don't know about you, but I play family games with my kids. So I thought there would be an opportunity to play some family games with family members and let them come out and enjoy that particular night under the moonlight.
I have no problem with what you're doing. I have a problem when I read Facebook or, or get calls, so that, that was, my intentions was not to attack you, and while I said that the intentions that you was, that, that the people involved setting it up, they probably had good intentions. I don't know where you got upset about, but I, I'm not trying to attack you.
That's what you don't understand. I'm not upset.
Well, based upon, based upon your demeanor, based upon your demeanor, I would say you was a little upset.
If I was upset, you would know.
You would know if Stan was upset.
I'm not upset.
So I don't, if you want to do this off-location, Red Mar Plaza, somewhere like that, hey, great idea. Go for it. Can, can the mayor put an end to this now?
No, I got one more thing I'd like to say.
Well, just a minute. Is that it's not a city-sponsored event, and it's a good idea, but it can't be done on city property without a city license, payroll taxes, property taxes, insurance, inspection mechanism for food and all that, and it has to be nonprofit. So as long as you're looking for another place to do it, I don't think anybody would have a complaint about it.
Sure.
Okay. What was the next thing?
Next thing is concerning Mr. Aldridge coming up and talking with us. You and I brought up the yard sale ordinance. A few members said, "Why are we wanting to pass an ordinance for one particular person?" Well, I, I said then, and I say it now, that I've had more than one complaint, I've had several complaints about it. But my question to you guys is, and I agree with this, so why are you guys so willing to pass an ordinance concerning chickens when we've had one complaint? So we talk about cleaning up Radcliffe. Let's work together. Quit the bullshit, and let's clean up Radcliffe.
Chris, I mean, you and I had a conversation about that, and I told you I want to...
Yes, sir, we did. And I, and you said we...
Well, I just want to make sure that...
Right, no, no.
Like Stan said, we moved the camouflage.
Right.
We know that. We talked. I made the initiative to talk, you, you made the initiative to talk.
That is correct.
To try to get that and sell it on the number, sell it on the property organization. So let's not give the camouflage. There's not a conversation going on.
No, there is a conversation between you and I, yes.
I sat on the panel the other day with the mayor. We had a very pleasant conversation. There was no diggy, no...
Yeah.
So, so we need to be careful when people come in and make accusations as if, you know, there are issues that we differ on, and the governmental process is set up so that we have sufficient rate and conversation. And when it's all said and done, everybody has a vote, and we move on.
But it's not that way. It's not, we don't, everybody have a vote, and we all move on. Every council meeting, we are fighting amongst each other. I've heard Skylar Construction 500,000 times. I'm tired of it. Let's move forward and quit bickering about the stupid stuff. We've done had this fight, we have this fight every council meeting amongst ourselves. It is time for us to quit this and move forward. There ain't a, that blame, one of us going to get reelected the way we've been acting.
Well, and that's the whole problem.
Okay, let me, let me, let me put an end to this. Just let me put an end to this.
Well, can I not speak?
Just wait a minute. I think the mayor has an opportunity to speak, but if you want to preempt me, you go right ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think the whole problem is, as Mr. Aldridge pointed out, it is an election year. I think once the election's over and everybody dies down, but everybody's so busy posturing and wanting to fight against this one and fight against that one, it doesn't do anybody any good. But that's what it is. It's all about showboating. If we would sit here and actually do work, we would get it done, and we need to talk about things during the work sessions instead of just giving us a little bit of information and then like, "Well, you all just need to discuss that yourselves." That's what a work session is, is where we can sit down and discuss.
Would you just try to do something positive when you're talking instead of throwing a little innuendo about how, how you're not getting any information? You got nineteen items of information last session at the work session, and we're told that we need to think about this. We will come back and talk about it again. At the next work session, I will think of everything that I can think of that we need to discuss, and one of them is about chickens. Another is going to be about scrapping, another's going to be about yard sale. I think that's our responsibility to talk about in the work session. I can tell you, before we have the work session on nine May, I'm gonna put those three items on, on the work session. I'm trying to give you as much information as I possibly can. I don't want to keep anything away from you, and don't intend to keep anything away from you.
I didn't say that you did.
You know?
I didn't say that you did.
Oh, I thought that's what I heard. My mistake.
No, that's not what I said.
Okay. Nine May is when we need to discuss some more of this, and I will try to listen to the tape and see what it is we need to discuss and bring it back to you and give you the items long in advance. Does any other city councilman have anything that they want to add?
No, I motion to adjourn.
No, not yet. The mayor has his comments yet, and the only comment I want to make is Kentucky League of Cities JD Chaney will be here with a legislative update on bills passed in the 2016 session, and primarily it's the bills that were supported by the Kentucky League of Cities on behalf of cities. And I think they passed more this year than they have in a long, long time.
And he's gonna do that at the work session?
He's gonna do that at the work session. Now, he's at another city and can't be here by four thirty, but he's told me he'll get here as quickly as he can after four thirty, and I'm assuming maybe five o'clock or something like that. So we'll put him on the schedule first, but if he's not here, we'll just move on to the next item. And with that, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
Say.
Got a motion? Do I have a second? Was there a second?